If it was MAC time, they'd change it. You'd have to buy a new one every year.
For sure.
I got seven bells.
That's probably why my name is zero.
Okay. We'll call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, November 19th, 2019. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Miller?
Rosado?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Knop?
Here.
Chancy?
Here.
Salvati?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
And McFadden?
Here. Okay, thirteen of the fourteen of us are here. Next on the agenda is a reminder to please speak into the microphone for BATV. Third thing would be approved in minutes for October 29th, 2019. Do we have anybody who have any comments, corrections, notifications? Someone care to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by you or second by Salvati. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, items to be removed, added, or changed?
None.
We have none to...
I do. I saw that there was a public hearing for the tax levy. I did not put that on there. That must have been a placeholder that was there and did not get removed, so that should be removed. We did not publish a notice for a public hearing.
Okay, so we will remove number six.
Not that it would have mattered, anyway.
But if anybody wants. Were you here for the tax levy?
No.
No.
Then you don't have to speak.
Go ahead, Sean.
You might want to wait till we get past number seven first.
Yeah, yeah, that would go much better for you.
You'd like to load the levy up in a U-Haul and move it somewhere else? We could work on that. Okay, then according to our change, we will now pass number six and move on to number seven, ordinance 19-81, conditional use for U-Haul commercial vehicle equipment sales and rental in the general commercial district, 1921A Wilson Street. Walden Callahan?
Yes, this is regarding the conditional use of commercial vehicle rentals at Batavia Parcel. Joel, if you want to go ahead and discuss this one.
Sure. The zoning code, the Batavia zoning code allows commercial vehicle rental, like a U-Haul business, as an allowed use with conditional use approval in the G.C. General Commercial District. The applicant Sean Vieland is here this evening. He has U-Haul rentals at his business, which is Batavia Parcel. It's a business services business. And the U-Haul rental portion of that business requires conditional use approval. Staff informed Mr. Vieland of this. He immediately submitted his application, and we're here this evening. The plan commission conducted a public hearing earlier this month. Two members of the audience spoke in support, not only of the business, but of Mr. Vieland also. The plan commission felt that this business would be compatible with other businesses in the shopping center and can work in this area. The plan commission did discuss ways to, reasonable ways to try and keep the U-Haul vehicles not as prominent on the property. They wanted the U-Haul vehicles to be kept at least 25 feet away from the Wilson Street and Randall frontages. They also put a limit on the maximum number of U-Haul vehicles on the property at any given time. That was based upon Mr. Vieland explaining his experience with his business, that he typically wouldn't exceed 15 vehicles on the property. The plan commission also wanted no more than six of the vehicles parked in front of or west of the building, with the remainder parked east of the building or behind the building. The plan commission, by a vote of five to zero, recommended approval of the conditional use application, subject to the conditions, as I reviewed them, that are written in the ordinance. They made findings, as you can see in the ordinance also. And with that, staff recommends approval of ordinance 19-81 as presented.
So there was a couple of things that I know we started talking about. In the original planning and zoning commission, it talked about 250 feet, and then in this one, it was 25. So that's why I wasn't sure whether or not it was a typo or not. If you could explain the difference, how it went from 250 to 25?
Sure. It's not a typo. The plan commission discussed the limitation that staff had recommended of 250 feet, and they felt that would, that would limit the total potential parking places too much. So they were more concerned with just having those vehicles not be so prominent right on the street frontages. So they, they suggested 25 feet that would keep it off of that front row of parking spaces, typically along Wilson. The parking spaces along Randall, they're not really on the Randall frontage because there's a separate parcel in between the Randall Road right-of-way and the properties that constitute the shopping center. It's a separate parcel for detention. But it would have to be at least 25 feet off of Wilson.
The next question I had was, he said, he stated EU normally keeps, or can keep, up to 15, but the normal might have been eight vehicles and two trailers. The initial staff recommendation was for eight, and then it turned into six. What was the decision on the six about?
Mr. Vieland explained how his business operates, and that, if I remember correctly, the eight vehicles represent what he typically keeps on his properties available for one-way rentals, meaning you rent for Mr. Vieland, you return to Mr. Vieland. But he may occasionally get a number of one-way rentals that could be on his property for a limited period of time before it's rented out for another one-way. So the plan commission was comfortable increasing that to give him some flexibility in, in running the U-Haul part of his business.
The, the other thing I was a little trying to figure out was, instead it was in violation of 42 or 4402, but then it cited the off-street parking of 4.2. So I didn't know what exactly the, was it that they were on the property, that they were too close, that they had signage?
The city of Batavia zoning code in the parking section, which is chapter, in the parking chapter, which is 4.2, or no, in the signage, trying to remember which one. We prohibit what we consider to be vehicle signs, and that is any vehicle that essentially has a business sign, and it is parked in a visually prominent location for the purpose of attracting business. And our zoning code does prohibit that. And in order to help keep these vehicles compliant with that part of our zoning code, staff had recommended quite a distance, keeping the vehicles quite a distance from the street frontages. The plan commission felt that 25 feet would be sufficient to meet the spirit of the code to not have these vehicles function as signs.
Would, do the vehicles that are kind of similarly at Menards, do they follow through with this? Do they have a conditional use?
Menards, the rental of vehicles for Menards, we would look at that as being an accessory use to Menards' principal use, which is home improvement and retail sales. Mr. Vieland came to the city, and he explained the importance of U-Haul to the viability of his whole business, and it's really more of a, of a main component of his business.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
I don't have a question, but more of a statement. I've rented several vehicles through, through Batavia Parcel, and done a great job. So, yeah, so, and I, I've rented many, many U-Hauls at many, many places, and you guys do a great job.
Do you wish to say anything? Do you have a preference on number? I know staff originally said eight, commission said six. Is there a...
Need to use the microphone, so that we have this on tape.
I guess would the six be limiting to what you normally have? Would it be eight?
Yeah, so they're, the in-town vehicles are there all the time. So the, the one, the one-way vehicles are a separate fleet for U-Haul, and those, those get dropped off, and they usually go out right away. You know, so, so to limit it just to the vehicles I have there all the time, it would, it would eliminate the one-ways, which are, the one-way rentals are probably 70% of the revenue. You know, even though they're, they're kind of in and out, you know, they're bigger rentals. So the 15, you know, like you said, gave, gave me flexibility, you know, to, to have those, you know, those one-ways be able to be dropped off and go back out. And it's, you know, it, it varies. Typically, there's, you know, the vans and trailers total, you know, would be normally between eight and... And, and then the ones in excess of the eight that are there all the time, like I said, are there temporarily, and, you know, they're, they're not meant to sit, you know, in a lot. And then even the vans that are, that are there, they're, you know, they're rented throughout the week, and on weekends, especially during the summer, there's no vehicles on lot at all, because they're rented. So they're not meant to sit there.
Joel, is there a distinction between the in-town and then the long-term that aren't sitting there on a consistent basis?
No. The, or code really does not make that distinction. The limitation of six was not the number of vehicles on the property. It was only the number of vehicles that can be parked west of or in front of the building, with the majority of the vehicles, with most of the vehicles being parked behind or to the east of the building. That's another idea to try and limit the visibility of the vehicles and keep parking for customers for all the stores.
Sean, didn't you say at the plan commission meeting that there's something that you've got with U-Haul, that if you suddenly get flooded with a bunch of one-way drop-offs, and your parking lot is now at capacity, you can contact somebody within U-Haul, and they can come and get those from you to clear your area back up?
Yeah, or actually, like, about two weeks ago, I, I pulled a trailer myself for the Aurora look. I didn't have room for it. Usually, the, the area field manager would come and pick it up if I didn't have room for it. In that case, I was able to do it myself, so. It's, you know, it's something I have control over.
Dan?
Just one question, and I swear, I'm not, I'm not pointing fingers. I am just curious, though. It feels like two years ago, we had a presentation by this business that they were announcing their U-Haul. So this is, this is like, we're cleaning up here to allow for this use, because I thought they've been doing this for, for a while.
Yeah, two years and 20 months.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Yeah, yeah.
The previous owner had set it up, and so when I purchased the business in, in February of 2018, it was part of the business. And I assume he was not aware of the, you know, the requirement of the conditional use permit. I certainly wasn't until Joel contacted me.
Okay, got it. So just housekeeping, then. I got it. Just, just want to clarify. Thank you.
Anyone else? Would anyone like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance 19-81? So moved.
Second.
Motion by Knop, second by Salvati. We gonna go with eight or six for the, I'm not, I wasn't clear on that. The staff recommendation was eight or six?
The staff, the staff recommendation is that the number, the total number of vehicles on the property at any given time is limited to 15.
Okay.
However, no more than six can be located west of or in front of the building.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes, ahs.
This has to go on the regular? Or can it go on the consent?
Well, if we put it on the regular agenda, it also offers the opportunity for the business owner to promote that aspect of his business.
Colonel flag.
Maybe error on the side of having it on the regular agenda.
Yeah, just put it on there. At least we can talk about it, and Joel, contact the property owner and ask him if he wants to come back for counsel.
Let him know it on the regular agenda, and that he's requested to promote his business. Thank you.
Thank you.
He's offered to, not requested. He'll feel obligated.
Next up will be ordinance 19-77, amendment to video gaming code. Walden Chancy?
Yep, so this is an amendment to our gaming code. Gaming code is, or I'm sorry, video gaming is a conditional use, so we do have to, to review this license. To change the ordinance to allow for a business owner to place additional terminals on their property means that we have to review this. Laura sent a memo regarding this. We do get some taxes off of this. We get fee income off of this as well, and I guess it's up to the council on whether or not we would like to expand video gaming in our town.
Elliot?
I guess just in reading this, the first ask I would have is, do we necessarily have to bundle the question of the E3 license allowing or, or to not be allowed with the same question of increasing the annual site fee paid? To me, those are two very different questions, and I, I would, for one, love to see that separated out.
Good point.
So you would like to have one meeting about one issue and another meeting about the separate issue, and then have two separate changes to the ordinance?
I don't know if a meeting is the right word, but certainly two separate things to vote on.
No meeting.
The reason, the reason why, so the reason why you saw both changes in one was at the mayor's request, and I know he's not present right now, so I, we can move forward with the E3 discussion? And if someone wants to make a motion to change the ordinance to withdraw the change to the fee?
We can make a motion to approve both if there's...
Right, I think we should have discussed both of them separate on their own merits, and then if we want to bundle them together to pass it, we can do that. Or if we want to change and not have part of it, that can come out of our discussion. I think that's, I think it should be handled.
Yeah, for sure. Do we want to just go around the table, or does anyone want to chime in?
Chime in. And so, just, and I've talked to several of you about this. When, when the, the whole gambling thing came to the table the first time, I, I was against it. I was. But the fact of the matter is, it passed, it's here, and for the sake of this discussion, the E3 permit is held by one entity here in Batavia, and that's Funway. And, you know, while I'm not a huge fan of, of expansion, I have seen what Bob intends to do with this. And I'll be honest, it's, it's, he'll have more control, and it's tighter, and it's, and it's better placed than anything else going on in town. He's got cameras, he's got controls, he has all that, and honestly, it, if there's any place in town that can do it, it's, it's Funway. And so, I'm not necessarily, again, for gambling, but for how he's going to do it, because we do have, we do allow it in Batavia, I would be for this.
Yeah, I agree with that, just because, had it been by itself, the only one that I initially might have approved would have been, because it's a gaming. It, it kind of goes with, some of the other machines that are in the facility that are geared towards children are video-based, which they win prizes. It doesn't qualify, but it's along the same sort of mechanism. I do have a question, though, that was presented to me by a person sitting in the audience. It's regarding whether, the, the city code states that it's Class A and D liquor licenses?
Yes.
But we have Speedway as a Class B, Class V.
Because it's a truck stop.
Right, so that's where the question was, it only mentions the certain licenses, but then you have to figure out that it's a truck stop.
Right, it follows the state statute, so the state says truck stops, paternal organizations, and then the liquor licenses.
And that was where it was, it's more along the lines of a truck stop and not the liquor license that we have issued, correct?
That's correct, when it comes to Speedway. Yeah, and it has to be, I believe, at least a three-acre site and a certain number of gallons sold.
That's what we thought, but I know Anthony looked into it just to make sure that we had the right information.
Yes.
Well, if there's no, I was just gonna say, I'm in support of it. I think of any of the places that I've been to, not only in this town, but in other towns. I think what Bob proposed to have for their stuff is probably one of the cleanest, nicest ones out there. And the majority of the ones we have in town, unless you're looking for it, you don't know that they're in the businesses that they're in.
Elliot?
So I, I'm just gonna say it, the, part of the reason why I ask is because I'm not for one, and I'm for the other. You know, it's, it's got nothing to do with Bob. I, I think the world of Funway. I think he's done a tremendous job with his renovation, his expansion over there. My kids are love it as well. Simple fact is, I just don't want to see gambling expand in our town, so I'm not in favor of this.
Almost exactly what Elliot said. The only thing I would add on is I have talked to some people, and some people are like, I won't take my kids there again. So it, there, I know that Bob did his own survey, and it's his business to deal with, but I'm sticking to my principles on this, that, yeah, maybe it's the right place to have it. If we only have one in the town, that would be it, but we have, we actually have an extra one, and we'll talk about that later, that we didn't really know about. So I'm against it, so.
I would, I would just second that, too, that I think this is the most ideal application for this in town, but I don't want to see it expanded, and I feel like I have to align all of my votes towards that goal of not seeing it expand. And I, and I do worry that in the future, you know, Speedway has it, so doesn't it just seem like a natural extension to also let the gas stations have it? And if we let bars have it, doesn't it seem like a natural extension to let a liquor store or a, or then a, a, not a restaurant, a grocery store have it? And, and I just know that, I mean, it's a lot of money. It's a lot of money to be made, and it's super easy, so I can see the interest expanding, and I would just hate to normalize it more now, and then not be able to control or have, you know, the, the culture is set, and future councils just see it spread more and more and more.
Yeah, I'll, I'll echo what Elliot said. I mean, I've been, when this, when we first had the chance to vote on it, legalize it in town, I was opposed to it then. I remain opposed to seeing it expand now that that's come, come along. But like Elliot said, the other half of that ordinance, the increase in the fees, I would absolutely support, so. For that, I'd like to see them broken out into two separate ordinances.
Okay.
I would like to chime in a little bit on this, too. I remember that when we were going to do the liquor tax, the gambling issue was going on at the same time. It was kind of a give and take. We were, we passed the liquor tax with the business owners knowing that gambling was going to be on the table. So some of us weren't here two and a half, three years ago when we did that, but we did have those conversations at the same time.
The only thing I would like to add maybe a little bit is to understand it from his perspective as a business owner. The other, expanding into other entities, I'm not in favor of, just because I do think those are an unwarranted expansion. But this entity is going to be dealing with the unfunded mandate, as he advised, which is the minimum wage increase, and he needs to figure out how he's going to do that. He has spent a ton of money already, expanding his business, putting his money into his business, and for this business, for this entity, while it doesn't align with my gambling prohibition side of it, it does on the business retention and his viability for the community.
Yeah, this is, this is a tough one, and I've talked to Bob for a while on this, and, and he does have some challenges coming up with his business. I also would point out that when, when video gaming or gaming first came to Batavia, he was not jumping into that. He wasn't looking for that. He does have these, these, you know, these next five years, he's gonna see some significant restraint, you know, expenses go up with the $15 minimum wage. With, however, with that said, you know, I was opposed to it. I wasn't on the council then, I would have voted against it, but I'm opposed to expanding it. You know, I, that would be the place, I would think. He's that type of business. I have total confidence in Bob, but I struggle with expanding it, because I'm against it from the, from the beginning. So it's a, it's a tough one. The other piece to it, I definitely want to separate him, because that's, you know, I'm totally for, if we're leaving money on the table, we shouldn't be doing it.
If anyone else wanted to speak, but I, I'm for, and just to reiterate what I said last week, I will hold the line here regardless of what cans we would be opening, but I'm in support, and I'm in support of both, and I would make a motion that we approve both, the amendment as is with both issues on the table. Next. Second. Motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
So are we going to separate it? Obviously not.
That's not the motion.
Well, right, if it fails, we can re-bring it up, but if they both pass, then there's no need to separate it.
Right.
If it passes, then we would not have to do anything. If it fails, we'd probably direct staff to split the two of them and bring them back for separate votes, two different ordinances.
Well, it's the same order.
Well, we could, well, we could have another...
Two separate issues. We can have another motion.
Yeah, we don't have to leave it, we're done.
And just so we're clear on this, this is, this is a conditional use, so we control the expansion, and so...
Anybody else want to chime in for a discussion? I, I will say, I walked into this completely torn. I somewhat regret my vote in favor of allowing in the first place, but I also go back to personal responsibility. I grew up in Batavia, I went to Funway, and I can tell you, I can picture 17-year-old Dan trying to break into this place to do the gambling. There's no way I was ever going to be able to get into this place based on the way he's gonna run it. If anyone's gonna do it, he's, he's gonna do this, do this right. And I go back to the testimony that we received from our residents and our neighbors telling us, this is the crack cocaine of the gambling world. This is the worst of, of the, of the gambling that, that is out there, and so it is, it is problematic, and I generally don't support it, but taking everything into consideration, I'm gonna bet on Batavia in this one, and I, I would support it, just for this particular case. So, so roll call.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
No.
Miller absent. Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
No.
Knop?
Aye.
Chancy?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
No.
Malley?
No.
And Uer?
No.
Eight to five, motion carries.
Okay, no further work needed. All right, Nick goes on to council, then, that'll be on the regular agenda.
Yeah.
And then we will move on next to the 2020 budget, resolution 19-114-R. You want to start at the end, or do you...
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I missed some of the original discussions while I was gone. We had great discussions last week, and I think we can be out of here in 10 minutes. We do, we did have a last-minute addition to this, though, and Peggy, you have it, right?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
All right. Sorry. Okay, so there were just a few amendments, or two amendments since last week, but I included the general fund information. There is no change from last week's presentation, but I just wanted to include this slide again, since most of the discussion was on the general fund. These were the changes that were made to general fund revenues and how we arrived at what we're proposing as the final number. 250,000 was the cut to property taxes, and then 75,000 was the decrease for the telecommunications tax, and the 115,000 was an increase for sales tax and home real sales tax. And then for expenditures, we had 50,000 in cuts, and we added the transfer from the general fund to the city hall capital fund, and we arrived at the 29.9 million. And we arrived at the 29.9 million for total expenditures for the general fund. And then the changes, the change since last week was we were notified by CMAP that we were being awarded the surface transportation program grant for the phase two of Prairie Street. Rahat sent out a memo today as well on that. So we added 166,600 in grant revenue and 238,000 for the design engineering contract. These are the final numbers for general fund, electric, water and sewer for revenues expenditures and days of operation. And then this would be the recommendation for approval at the city council meeting on December 2nd for the total budget for all funds for expenditures and revenues.
Anybody have any questions? Otherwise, we can just take these one by one. Anyone have any other discussion items or things to add?
Just want to say, I think it's, it's a slippery slope if we continue to operate at a negative, operating at a negative. And I just think it's a slippery slope. And it's, as Peggy has shown us in the last, next five year objection that she did, you know, our reserves will be down to like 37 to 39 days.
For sure.
That's unacceptable. So it's just, just for the next year and the coming years, we need to maybe be a little more diligent and that's it.
Yeah, municipal funding is always going to be a marathon, not a sprint. And I understand the wanting to make sure that we're taking a chunk here, taking a chunk there, so that we're avoiding a big tax increase next year. I would agree with that. If anybody here wanted to promise, read my lips, no new big tax next year, even if we do pass it. Because there's no guarantee that even if we do every year small, we still need to do. And that's why this year on these circumstances, we don't need to sprint. We can settle into our run. We can give a breather for our residents and determine those times when we need to push it a little bit further. Because we can't guarantee that we're only going to need a small one next year or we're going to need a big one next year. That wouldn't matter either way. So I look at this year based on, just like I do every year, what do we need to do this year for this year's spending and this year's revenue that's coming in? Next year is going to be different because we're going to have different sets of facts. Things change, circumstances change. And we evaluate the conditions at that time. And nothing means that you set a precedent because it's always designed to have meaningful, thoughtful discussions that I'm very proud that we do based on a well documented, well thought out budget that's put together every year.
Yeah. And I appreciate all the effort that goes into it. Now, this is not an easy thing for you guys to do. One of the things that has put us in this situation, just as a reminder, is, was a half million dollars more in pension funding that we weren't expecting. So that's part of where we're at right now. And we don't expect it to be a half a million dollars every year. If it comes out as a half million dollars again next year, yeah, now we've, we're gonna all have to do some soul searching that are, they're doing this now and figure out how we're gonna manage going forward. The hope is that that's just a one-time surprise.
What are your thoughts, Peggy? Is that a one-time surprise?
The size of it, yes. It was higher than expected. The year before, it did, I think we had a 230,000 increase. But our IMRF rate did not increase like it did. We had quite a big jump in our IMRF rate, which contributed to that. And that was unusual. So I'm hopeful that we won't see that again next year for the IMRF side.
What do you project it to be next year?
I can't begin to say. I mean, we have, we have the 2020 rate and that's what it went from 10.3 to 12.2 or something along those lines. What it will be the following year will depend on many, many factors calculated by an actuary based on all of the members of IMRF and the total return then as they calculate it back for Batavia.
So if we like think really hard, you know, like Woodstock, no, no raise, we have a deficit. I mean, it goes down, right? I don't see that happening either though.
The, the rate, the contribution rate, it has decreased in other years. So it could happen for the IMRF, but our pension and for police and fire will, will never decrease.
And our expenses will always continue to rise. I mean, every year there's a, we voted in raises every year, right, increases. And so for the next three years, we can rest assured we're going to have increases.
We will have increased spending next year aside from a major change in our structure. We know that.
As being in construction, unions during construction, they, they get increases. I mean, costs go up and, and for products, for equipment, for materials, costs rarely ever go down. And, you know, we're coming into, you know, we're doing a lot of work in the city. So you can rest assured costs are going to increase every year. So I don't see us, I mean, I just don't see us saying, well, it might be different next year. I think we're going to be here with a lot more costs next year. And we're just gonna have to bite the bullet next year.
Right. Some of the variables that may have a favorable impact next year will be sales tax. Depending on how shopping goes at our physical stores and then how the online sales are distributed to us. We're supposed to get the home rule portion of the sales tax in the second half of the year. We won't actually see those numbers until September, but we'll accrue a full half year on the books. So hopefully those will see some increases in the cannabis sales tax. We might see some funds there.
And that's, I mean, I, I think it's 10 years I've been on the council, Main Street has really done their share. They've really been coming forward the last few years and, and adding to the sales tax revenue through their, they're generating it through all their, their exercises and bringing people into downtown. So, you know, kudos to Main Street, to everyone on, on board with that. And it's continue to, to support because of their efforts. But, and I'm a large proponent of sales tax, but I don't think that's gonna, that'll help. As much as nobody wants to raise taxes, I think it's coming at us.
Yeah, I think the, the events that Main Street organizes, it may not contribute directly to sales tax, but it has so many other benefits for our community, for a sense of community that it is well worth having them do that.
Yeah, I'm with you, Mike, that if we're not keeping up with the cost of living, we're falling behind. I'm not saying let's, let's have an increase that would erase a deficit. I'm saying just keep up the slow and steady pace. So the big gaps, when they come, they're not as big. So that's, that's where I stand on it. About the middle wave.
I guess I would add that I tried to get across in my appeal last week that I thought the banker in me has a philosophical problem voting for this budget because I recognize labor costs are going up and material costs are going up and we are falling further and further behind. Now that said, I also recognize we had a list of strategic plan, things that I would like to see us tackle. Some of them are wants, some of them I think are needs, but we don't have any solid plans. We don't. So setting aside money for them, for plans where we really truly don't know how we're going to be spending it. I recognize why that would be problematic when people see that we do have reserves. So I make an exception for, for this year, I suppose. But I do think home rule sales tax is on, is on the table next year. I think a, a multi-penny tax increase is, is, is expected next, next year. And whether or not we, we fall into recession between now and then, we might actually even have to look at, at cutting some, some spending. And I can't think of many places to cut. So this could be a very, very difficult discussion next year. We are setting ourselves up for a 2020 where we really have to, really have to pay attention.
I'll, I'll echo that, what you said about, you know, our planning and, you know, we talk constantly about how there's things that we want to do, but yet we don't want to pay for them at this point because we can't. And I really feel like the next couple of years, it would be easier to walk up the small flights of stairs than it would be to jump from floor to floor. Because I feel like that's where we're going to be in the next couple of years if we don't slowly walk up that stair, that flight of stairs. And that's, that's my only fear is that we're going to be back here and we're going to be looking at other things, including home rule sales tax, where I think that goes directly against what we're trying to do to be an attractive place, to have a retail business that doesn't have the highest sales tax rate around. And that's something that with what we've seen happen to Randall Road in the last several years, will be very hard to sell to people that want to come in and invest in those sales tax generating businesses if the first thing they know is the sales tax rate is going to go up.
That said, I appreciate the discussions. And since, since last meeting, I, I, I will, I will support this budget. I recognize that we are, we are up for a very fascinating discussion next year. So if nobody else has anything.
I would like to make a comment. You know, I've certainly sat through all this discussion here and I've been very guarded as to how much observation I make just because you guys are the ones that are, you guys and gals are the ones that are responsible and make the decision here. And it's your vote that makes that final decision. I would offer up, now, when I go into my world in Chicago, you know, we are looked out upon by a lot of the rest of the world as kind of the lucky place that we've got more things going on here of a positive nature than you find in many other parts of the region. And there's a number of other cities surrounding us that are in really, really rough shape. I mean, the type of thing where they're talking about, you know, laying off the police and calling the county sheriff and saying, well, you better come in here and protect us because we can't afford the police anymore. And we're even talking about shutting down the fire department and the ambulance service. There's areas in Cook County now where they, they have shut the ambulance down. And so the counties had to step in and, and bring in a private contractor who then sits someplace and responds with the ambulance. And then when they take you to the hospital, they're back in about three hours with their bill for $3,000 to $5,000 that they try to charge you and get Medicare or Medicaid or somebody to pay for it. And they kind of know what the game is. So they file these higher bills so they can get some return on it. So I would just suggest that, you know, there's going to be a lot of movement at the state level to try to respond to something here. And the state of Illinois is probably going to have to figure out some way to generate more revenue for the cities because not so much us, but there's a lot of others that are in really rough shape. We do have, if you look at what's going on here, our downtown right now is really raising its head quite high with all the ideas that are already on the street. We've got a few more that are going to be coming to you here pretty quick that are also very exciting and will potentially generate some more revenue in the downtown area. I'm, I'm amazed, quite frankly, at the vitality and the vibrance and the interest that downtown Batavia has at the moment. I, you know, we've got a lot of people in here asking a lot of questions about what do you do? How are you attracting this? And, you know, just as at one point would be that east side business district over there from the river going up to Washington Avenue and all the new things that have suddenly taken hold over there. There's a lot of people watch that with great interest that you add, you know, three new restaurants and you got three more in other places in town and probably more coming. And so, you know, the positive spin is here. So I, I would encourage us to, you know, don't send a real negative message that, you know, we're in deep trouble that, you know, I think we've got expertise at the finance department that's going to keep us above water. And we'll make sure if things start going real bad, you'll be the first to hear it from, you know, Lauren Peggy about what's really happening here. So I, I think we've got good, sound advice surrounding us. That being said, you know, there's some other things that are happening out there. Menards is talking about expanding, which probably will be another, this raising cane, you know, that'll be something. I, I am told that that will be an amazing thing to watch for a couple of years because it's going to be one of the few of that restaurant that's going to be in the immediate area here. And that thing seems to have a real great following in other parts of the country, specifically attracting grandparents, bringing grandchildren in there. And there's a couple of reasons why that is. But they tell me, Katie, bar the door, watch what's going to happen at Randall and McKee. And then Chick-fil-A is going to come back with some kind of response. And it's just been described to me that what Batavia has on the front door here now is Burger King chasing McDonald's 20 years ago when McDonald's was out and Burger King wanted to build their stores all across the street. And there was a lot of good things came about because of that, that brought some other people along with it and whatever. But on the other side of the coin, you know, we've had in a pretty deep investment in this town of new remodeling of older houses and a lot of new stuff, you know, out there on Wind Energy and Kirk Road, we've got 243 new townhouses being built. I just was to the groundbreaking last week for Fermilabs, the second groundbreaking and that they're going to be building there just to the north of the, the bike trail that goes over Kirk Road. And that's where they're going to put their mountain in. It's going to be quite visible from Kirk Road. And so there's a lot of interesting stuff happening here. There, there's a billion and a half dollars in new construction going to be spent out there. And that's going to have some, I think, positive impact on the town. And then if you kind of, again, going back to this home thing, another phenomenon we are dealing with here and the reason we had to hire more people in the building department is we have all this remodeling going on in all the older houses. And if you look at what's happened on both the east and west sides of the river and the older neighborhoods, most of which is 100-year-old homes, we're going crazy. It's being bought by younger couples who want to move in and be in the Batavia schools and walk to downtown and walk to the schools. But they also, you know, bring with them the desire, they got to have a bigger kitchen and they got to have a bathroom on the first floor. And so all these things are being knocked out. And then with, you know, this, this, the activity that we're experiencing, I'm going to predict that we are going to see a significant increase in our EAV assessed, equalized assessed valuation because it, it's really pumping in. Toll Brothers has got almost 60 new houses out there in the 500,000 plus range that is going to come on. Most of those aren't on the tax rolls yet. So, you know, I, I, I don't like to go to Chicago and even talk about this because everybody sits there and with such envy, it's, you know, what, my goodness gracious, why can't we get any of this, you know? So the other thing that's got a little bit of interest is most, some of you were here when we did the waste transfer station out in the industrial park. And, you know, at the end of the day, I would suggest that probably was a good decision because it's been run very well. We don't have any environmental problems with it. And now it has been re-acquired, I guess I would describe it, by, by waste management. And they seem to be setting themselves up for bringing a lot of activity more than has been there in the last several years. So I think our revenues from there, what's our revenue this year? Do you know off the top?
About 550,000.
Yeah, I'm thinking that we could be seeing a shot in the arm from that. So, you know, there's good news around here. And I applaud all of you for your, your conservative visions as to what we should and should not be doing. And I'm thinking that there may be some decisions have to be made here in this coming year about things on the strategic plan or the wish list or things we'd like to have. And we're probably going to have to look at each one of those very closely and make a careful guess as to whether or not this is something that we, we're going to want to go into. But, you know, the budget that has been prepared and you guys have approved and, you know, as Peggy just indicated, we've had to throw a few more things onto it. And, you know, this deal that we got from CMAP of this railroad crossing gates at Prairie and Wilson is really kind of an interesting little benefit. You know, I'm told that our railroad crossing over there at Prairie and Wilson may be the most active traffic intersection in northern Illinois that doesn't have a crossing gate at it. And so that, that the feds really are very interested in seeing specifically two legs of that intersection gated because that is, that is, but, you know, they came up with the, almost a million seven to help us pay for that. So I don't want to look a gift horse in the mouth. That's one we need to take the money and come up with a local match and get on with it. And so this is, this is all part of a new way of doing business and the distribution of federal money in the area. There's some places that have lost money because they asked for projects and five years later, they've never put the project into practicality. So the feds have just announced they're coming in and taking all the money away. and taking all the money away, because you're going to have to reapply and start over again, because we're not going to sit here. We want, if we're going to give you the money, you got two years, basically, to get the engineering done, get the acquisition right aways or whatever. And you better be prepared to perform, because if you aren't, the money's gone. So, you know, we're, we got a little bit of a gun to our head on that one, but it's a nice problem to have, because it's going to solve a, a situation that probably needs to be solved. So, you know, all things aren't good, but all things aren't bad. Uh, you can sit here today because of your leadership. Batavia is recognized as one of the better-run places in the region. So I appreciate everything everybody's done. I encourage the passage of the budget.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I just want to say one thing to, to your comments. And, uh, you know, and I am excited about the, the activity in our downtown. There is a lot of movement. But I would attribute a lot of that movement to the investment made by the city into our infrastructure, our downtown. And I just hope our city, city council continues with that momentum. And so, but that is, uh, it's a wonderful thing. And I hope I never come across as, as being negative to our, our city and our, our stature here, because I think we are moving in a forward direction. And I just, I like the momentum and the movement.
There's a very strong history lesson there to be learned in what you just said. And it has paid a benefit. And it will continue to.
I think so. Thank you.
Nothing further than, um, I would make a motion that we recommend a council resolution 19-114-R approving the 2020 budget.
Second.
Uh, motion and second. Uh, have a roll call, please.
Chancet?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller absent. Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
And Knopf?
Aye.
Motion carried.
With that, then, I would also recommend a council ordinance 19-73, which would be the 2019 tax levy.
Second.
Motion and second. Let's take a roll call.
Peggy, want to present anything about-
Oh, I'm sorry.
I did have a, just a short slide, um, for those who may not have seen earlier, uh, meeting, uh, discussion. Uh, this is the, uh, EAV, the actual and our estimate for 2019. And the breakdown of the funding. The debt is an automatic levy. We don't change, uh, do that. It's filed with the bond ordinance, and they file, or they levy it automatically. Um, but these will be the changes that are reflected in the ordinance that, um, was just mentioned, for a total of 250,000 plus the 1,080 in the debt levy. And then the rate is expected to be, uh, .734, the same as last year. And that was all. Just three little slides there.
Do you have a similar breakdown for the, for the SSAs, or we don't have that?
I don't have anything for the SSAs.
Okay. And we do have to take these votes, roll call, don't we? We don't, we can't voice vote these ones. Okay. Okay. So, uh, roll call for the levy then, please.
Chancet?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller absent. Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
And Knopf?
Aye.
Motion carried.
I'm moving on to ordinance 19-74. That is for SSA number 30. And I would, um, recommend we, I'll send that to council.
Second.
A motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Chancet?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller absent. Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
And Knopf?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Moving on to SSA number 30, that is ordinance 19, uh, dash 74. Wait, I'm sorry, uh, 19, uh, 75 for SSA 62. Recommend to council.
Second.
Motion and second. Uh, roll call, please.
Chancet?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller absent. Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
And Knopf?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Peggy, for all the time you put in for that. Okay, next up is item 13, an update on the city logo project.
Subcommittee has, has met, and, uh, we have some things to show.
Yes.
Contrary to Alderman Serone's negativity in saying that we wouldn't get anything done, shame on you.
He said, what?
A lot of hard statistically significant work that was done.
That's as big as I can get, so. Whenever you're ready.
Sure.
Um, so I'll, I'll just kind of lead off. So a group of us met, uh, to just kind of steer this and, um, get it back out into navigable waters. Uh, and, and thanks to, uh, to Griffin and, and Christopher for, uh, stepping up. Uh, so what we did was we kind of, we, we took a step back and, and looked at, and, and Griffin had gone to Denver and, uh, had gotten some, some, uh, some feedback and, and seeing what, what other communities had done, um, around the, the country. And so we kind of took that under advisement. And, and so we set up a process by which we evaluated 50 logos from, uh, from around the country with, somewhere in the municipal sectors, somewhere in the private sector, but all had kind of a, a vibe, a similar vibe. And so we went through and, and we actually voted on them, uh, to top five, in terms of what we thought in terms of, uh, look and feel and color and, and all that stuff. And, and what, and so we, we took those, scored them, so we could get an idea of where we were in terms of look and feel. And so with that, we, so we all came to the top five, scored them, and we, and we, we got a pretty good idea of what we were looking for. And so we sent that back with, uh, with Griffin and Christopher, and, and they came back to us with, uh, a few different directions. Uh, one of them, all decent. Uh, one of them, I think, stood head and shoulders above the rest. And so we're going to walk through that. We'll walk through the process of where we've been, and then kind of ramp up to what we'll, we'll show you, uh, as far as what we're recommending, and then some of the application of, of where that could go.
We're not necessarily taking-
No, there's no action coming out of here. This is, this is for marination. So, so get your crock pots going.
All right, here's, uh, the first one that we brought.
And just, one of the things that we, we talked about too, is, is, uh, is a want to see the river within, within the logo, uh, seeing as how that's kind of something, that's something that we really stand on. Not actually stand on the river, but, you know what I mean. That, that is, it's a focal point of ours. And, uh, and, and honestly, the windmill as well is something that is part of our heritage.
And this is the second one.
Are these in any particular order? Is it?
Okay.
There's three. So, there you go. Uh, and this is the third one.
The third one is what we're recommending. Um, it really provides, we think, everything that you, you could want within, within a mark. Uh, as far as the windmill, there's a river in the background. Uh, it, it stands out well in all, in whether it's in, in color, grayscale or black. And then the font itself is a tweaked font, um, that I thought they did a great job, job with. Um, it, it's, it's, it's got some hip to it, but it's also got some professional to it. So kind of a mullet of a font, as it were. So, business up front, party in the back. So, um, and, and it's, and one of the things that, and that's, and that's a trick, right? Whenever you're, whenever you're working with logo and, and, and typeface, is to come up with something that is, uh, something that reflects who you are. And I think that does with Batavia. Where we're not stodgy, uh, we're not, you know, we're not completely free flowing, we're somewhere in between. And I think that, that, that font in itself, and actually, it is a modified font, so it's, it's really become a mark, um, really reflects that. So, but I'd love to get you guys' thoughts in, in what you think. So we've, they worked very hard on this, and I, and I really appreciate them stepping up and answering the call.
I'd, I'd love to just go around the table and just get people's guy reactions, if that's, if that's okay.
Yeah, and we, we can show some of the application.
Is there a way to put all three up on a?
We're gonna-
He's handing it out.
We've got to hand him.
Sorry, with the new Adobe, it doesn't, uh, it doesn't display as well as the last one, ironically. Uh, there's an example of, uh, you know, potential sign. Um, more options for some different colors. Um, wasn't partial to brown myself, but, uh, as you can see, still applies. Um, looks very nice.
The black and white really hops off like the utility trucks.
Yeah. It's good on a shirt. So, another good choice, and, uh, an opinion standing, but, uh, we all kind of came to a consensus that we thought this was a good representation. And, uh, yeah, any feedback?
Bring it. This is, this is for open discussion. Um, good, bad, indifferent. Bring it.
I would just make the observation, I certainly don't have any problems with the logo. I'm wondering, is, is there a suggestion there could be flexibility in the colors of the letters for the word City of Batavia?
Yeah.
That, what, what you're seeing in the color right there is an extension from the mark, so it's just for continuity's sake. But that's not to say we can't.
I mean, I guess, in the coffee shop where I go, I mean, I try to listen to what people are saying. You know, anytime you throw blue at them, they're thinking, oh, you're trying to look like Geneva. I mean-
Mayor, they do know that our, our current logo is blue.
Right. Well, they make comments about it. And I guess I'm just saying that, you know, for certain parts of the community, or certain activities or whatever, I could see where you could, uh, yellow City of and, and red Batavia.
Sure. And I, yeah, and the, and the navy, the navy blue is not Viking blue, just-
Well, I bet that's, that's-
That is a proprietary blue.
That's the, that's the, kind of the word on the street that's out there. And, I mean, I think, as I told people when this whole thing started, I said, you know, I think we're just, the council's review, revisiting it, trying to come up with some good ideas, and that there, there's going to be flexibility in the colors of whatever it is that we're going to do here. So, you know, it could be, I mean, I guess we wouldn't pass a rule that said, if the Bulldog boosters wanted to use the logo and make the City of and Batavia yell, yellow and red, that there wouldn't be a big to do about that.
Geneva blue's more of a burnt blue the past couple of years. Soft 09 blue.
Are we just going around the table, or how do we do this?
Just, just, yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Nick.
Mark was first, though.
Yeah, actually, I like this one better, and I think if I started the windmill, because you go with what we have right now, it's, it, what we have right now looks exactly like a windmill. And if you look at the first two, it's like, they're possible, obviously, because they're not connected. It's not a complete one. So this takes us from something that is very classic, and starts to move us in a direction of something that's a little bit more free-form, without being so far gone that it just like, hey, there's this thing floating above a pedestal. Um, so I think I really like that look there, because it starts to move us, like you said, a little bit more casually, but still has professionalism.
And that is, that is actually modeled after the windmill right out here.
I was going to note that.
Yeah. Shouldn't the top be off?
Well, in a perfect world.
We're not planning on implementing this right away.
The animated one.
See? Go ahead, Nick.
I, I, from a pleasure-seeking thing, put this one as the third of these. Um, I do get, kind of, it ties in a little, it has a traditional look to it, so I, I get that aspect. That aside, the, the Simpsons clouds kind of make it cartoony in my mind. Um, and I don't like the color combination, but obviously that's adjustable. What I like about this one is a little more abstract, but I like both in, in the, in the cursive, in the shape of the windmill and the river, there's like a forward movement. Um, there's like a positive motion forward, where the other ones are just kind of stuck there. Um, and that caught my attention, and I, and I liked it. So that was, I mean, I, I can go with all of them, but that was the order. And this one, I, I liked, and that's even going a little more right to left, uh, or left to right, which I like, but, um, that was my-
Just, just so you know, in that last one, it is, it is implying movement as the vein is to the right, implying that it's going from left to right.
Right. That, that makes it look right to the left to me for some reason, the way it, uh, it's like the arrow, that's the tail of the arrow.
If the wind's blowing.
Right. I, I just, the circles. And the, the other actual concern, if you pull up the, the screen, uh, with the truck, um, like that, when you pull back, it's not really clear what those things are. Like, if you see that truck down the street, it's, is that a number eight? What, you know, when you walk up to it, you get it? It's, it's not very clear what-
BB8.
I see where you went with it.
A snowman? Is it a snowman? Like, it just kind of looks garbled from a distance.
The Minion.
Just something I caught when it was, the screens were going by.
That's, that's, sure.
Something that is nice about it, though, um, in going in an art direction in this way, um, it does look nice up close and good on documents. Um, but also, you've got City of the Batavia huge there. So it's kind of like a little bonus, uh, when you get up close, you get to see all the extra stuff. And then, uh, you know, once you get used to it, you can identify it right away, I'd think.
That was it.
Um, I've kind of, as this has been happening, and I've been just looking at trucks and cars and different cities I've driven through, and it is amazing to me when you look at logos that are out there. And I especially, I noticed this past couple of weeks, I've seen from the state at different levels, whether on Tollway or the Fire Marshal or other cars out there. Some of them, the logo's this big around on the side of the car, and all you see is a dot. And until you literally get alongside of it, next to it, you can't tell what it says. I think this is instantly recognizable after it's been out there for a year. No matter which one of these we picked, you'd be able to tell that it's Batavia City Truck. Um, one of the things I like is that in the dark, you know, whether grayscale or in the black and white, I think that that lends itself really easy to be used on any truck color we purchase, because we don't always purchase the exact same colors within our fleets or our different departments, because of the trucks that are available. Through the state purchasing things that we do, they're not always exactly the same color. So I think that that works really well for me, uh, from that aspect.
I think this one is my favorite. Um, and it's stuck with me the longest sitting here so far, because it, it's, like, the badge shape is kind of a nod to our previous logo, and I think it's kind of a nice modernization and evolution of that, without jumping to anything too new, because we don't like to do that too much. And so that's, that's the one that's, that's just my preliminary look as I marinate. That, that one's my favorite.
I'm going to agree with you, Nick, on this. I like this one best. I did like the first one that Griffin did propose. I think that there's some simplicity to this, just like the McDonald's logo, the Walmart, the Nike. Uh, also on this one, I could see us substituting the Batavia writing, and even the windmill with yellow or red. I think it's, this one is very logical and easy to do that with. I don't know if I liked the first one, or the third one that we picked either. It looks, there's a lot going on. And I don't, I definitely don't like it on the truck.
I, I would agree. I would rank this one first because of the, the simplicity to it. Um, this second and this third, because they get more and more complex. I just- I just think it, when we're looking at a logo, it's simple. So I, I, that was kind of why I liked the original one, but I realized we're past that. But I, I like to keep it more simple. Also, you know, one of the things, first things I saw that stuck out here, it's a blue river and two white rivers, I don't, you know, the, it doesn't necessarily convey a river.
It's so clean, it's white.
Yeah, I, I actually like all three, and so it's one of those ones where I personally don't think we can go wrong either way. The, the script one is more looser, which would be different for a municipality. I do like the simplicity of it. It would be, I wonder, in variation to what we had, would it be? Number two is definitely formal. I see that as a police patch. I can see that as more shield, more hardcore, right off the bat, and it says, boom. But as much as I like that one, I'm also like, well, does that really kind of speak to the entirety of the city? So, for me, the, the one that's proposed gives that kind of balance between the two. And it's just funny how you'd look at different things. I see movement in that picture, in that it's got a horizon and you're looking forward. You are, you, you can see where you're wanting to go, and you're driven towards that point. When you're all, the other two are clearly windmills. The third one, when you step back a little bit, it looks like a wheel. It looks like it could be a bicycle wheel, in many ways, too. So when you step back, it, it has a different play on it, just being a windmill. It incorporates a little bit of other movement with.
You're trying to suck Abby in with the bicycle thing.
Get the Bicycle Commission vote.
But that's what I see with that.
And the environmental.
But it clearly is, but it clearly is a windmill, being on the platform, and with the, what I think in all of these that has been a little bit lacking, it's got the tail. You know that it, what it is. It's less abstract, so I'm fine with all of these, although I can see the, now the sight unseen is the Simpsons, the clouds. Just don't make them storm clouds.
That one there, we gotta hold generation or more.
Yeah.
That's, that's actually, that is gonna be actually.
So you stole one of my thoughts. You just.
Because you guys said these were where you wanted to go.
I, I understand, I'm just curious if you had it. I'm interested that you, that you brought up those points, can you go back to the one that was maybe a little too formal?
Okay.
Yeah.
It doesn't mean that it is.
I, I like that one. There is one that didn't make it to the table. That's like a hybrid between that and the one that was kind of being recommended. It gets rid of the Simpsons sort of cloud, if you will, and it makes a little bit more elegance, but I think these were presented on purpose to be three very distinct directions to go to. A hybrid would be an interesting solution, but that's why they were presented this way. Elliot? So, I, I was gonna throw out that, and, and then I heard it over here. No, not at all. Cursive is becoming a lost art. Plain and simple, it just is, it's, it's getting to a point where it, it, it doesn't resonate as, as something that you have to read. You actually have to kind of struggle with some of the younger generation, who has never, you know, really had to write a lot in cursive as, what does that say? I have no doubt it would take, if we gave it time. But for that reason, that initial struggle, that's kind of why I initially balked at this one. The shield on, on the second one, I, I absolutely agree on, on, I, I think that would look great on a police badge or something. I, I don't know if it's as welcoming as I might, or as friendly as I might like to see our, our logo, but I, I don't have a problem with it. That's just where I, I thought of it, is, you know, this is a strong logo. Maybe we do need to defend against Illinois, I don't know. The, the third one, though, I, I would agree, I, I didn't see the Simpsons clouds, so that didn't hit with me, I'm not gonna let that stay in there. But I did like the, the path, I mean, you, I kind of saw the prairie path, I kind of saw the river, I kind of saw the bicycle paths, I kind of saw just a roadway forward, but I also liked that the windmill was coming out of the logo, this notion of a depth on a 2D image, you know, and, and that kind of spoke to me as well, that there's some depth here to the town. Very deep.
Who is on the committee?
What do you want to know? It was an offshoot of Government Services and our two designers.
I, I, I think you guys did a good job. Like Marty said, I mean, all three of them, I have taste in my mouth, so all three of these I could easily buy by.
Yeah, I'd just add on, Elliot, I totally hear what you're saying, because at first I thought that, about the script, about cursive, and, and, but it, but then the more I looked at it, I thought, I looked at it as, there's history here, and saw that as a plus.
I, I just, I just thought, this one here, there's a lot going on, it's kind of busy, a lot of things in it. So I, I think what, what got me the most would be this one here. Just seems like it's, it's movement to it, moving forward, and it is, there's a lot of simplicity to it. So that's, this is what I would like, if I was to choose, I'd probably do this first. Either way, all three of them are fine with.
The, the advantage of that one, too, as I marinate more, is you are less defined by what color you make everything. But that could be, that could be gold, it could be red, it could be whatever, the blue can still stay, but that way it can capture some of that, that some of the citizens might be concerned about, depending on the usage. I mean, you have to obviously pick what is the main logo, but that gives more flexibility.
Is there a font that's not cursive that gives the movement?
Yeah, sure, there's, there's, you can, you can do all kinds of things with, with, with a typeface to make it look like that.
They're teaching cursive again. They went back and they started doing it again.
Outstanding. Anybody else? Yeah.
Um, I will say, although the badge one is my favorite still, I would love to see the other windmills in it, because I do like the, I like the motion of the other windmill, and I like the, the nod to this one out here of, of the, of multicolored one, and then, um, what was my other note? Had one? Oh, this, uh, the cursive one reminds me a lot of Main Street's logo, and they've got the two kind of river swooshes, and I think their tagline, the "always moving by nature" is a fantastic tagline, and so that's, I just wanted to point out, it was very reminiscent of that.
This could all change next week, Griffin.
It'll be in your box by the time you get home.
It's gonna be the Spark logo.
Wait, 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 wait till this hits Facebook.
Facebook hasn't waited yet, so.
Sweet Lord, that's why we didn't send it out.
That's right.
Anything else?
Keep it low.
All right, thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Good work, thank you.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
We'll, we'll come together as the secret enclave, and, uh, go with the next steps, with, with what you guys have sent us.
And then maybe we'll have some, where we're gonna go before the year's over?
Hope so.
Because we do still have a couple of entryway signs in the budget, because we are optimistic.
And that's good, before we get into other, I mean, projects that are, this reminds me, because I've had several comments as Batavia's gone through the football season this year, we only have, I think, one or two signs up from the 2017 state championship. We do not have any of the 2013 signs any longer up, so I don't know.
I think people have stolen them.
Well, that was gonna be my next thing, was is, how many of them did, can we find out how many of them we made and where they ended up?
I think there were five each year.
There were five for each year, and how many we have left?
Two, I think.
Do we want to replace them? Because I, I feel like, you know, there's two big things that happened in the city in the last.
I've talked to the high school about, you know, we would make a new ones for each time, and put it someplace in the high school football field, so all the visiting fans could, or people visiting could see that we've done this twice already, and really, you know, tell the world about ourselves. I mean, that's probably the place it should be, in my opinion.
Because I know that that's been a comment to, you know, that they were there, and now they're no longer there, but if they've been stolen, I don't know.
Yeah, somebody's got them hanging in their, family room in their rec room or something. I don't think they're gone, I think they're just.
They're not at my house.
They're bigger than I thought they were.
So just food for thought, we should maybe talk about.
Well, why don't, you know, let's talk about it, I mean, as you and I can talk, I talked to Julie, or Aaron, or Andrews, Andrews, or whomever. I mean, I'm all for it, I think, I agree with it, we should talk about that and illustrate.
They'll probably tell you how many were made.
Yeah.
But I think the high school area is where it should be done.
Yeah.
We can go out and bolt them to the light posts out there, about 20 feet off the ground, so nobody can get to them.
Weld and electrify it.
Challenge accepted. Yeah. Okay, now we will move on to project status.
Okay, so, um, and I am, I'm kind of doing this on the fly, but I remember yesterday, we wanted to know when were the brush pickups going to be, and so I just wanted to take a look at, so, our final leaf collection schedule. We are completing, um, the west side is in progress right now, and then on the east side, we're gonna do that final pickup on the week of November 25th. Um, and then, back to the brush collection. Maybe I shouldn't have done this on the fly, I apparently set myself up for failure here.
Um, I'm in the back bottom of it, the east side collection is December 2nd, citywide, and the west side collection is the same.
Yeah, same. The week of December 2nd is the final brush collection week. Um, also, Alderman, you brought it to my attention, but a similar situation occurred as, as with the U-Haul, that it was not caught. We had changed video gaming to be a conditional use in September of 2018. What should have happened after that? We have two departments handling video gaming then, so the conditional use is handled by the Community Development Department, and the licensing is handled by the Police Department. So after changing the zoning code to require a conditional use, we should have brought those two processes together, and said, as, you know, part of your application process for the license, you should show that you have also, at the same time, filed an application for the conditional use. Those two processes can happen, you know, side by side, so that it doesn't take any extra additional time, but the license should not be granted unless and until the conditional use has also been approved by city council. So we did that in September. The only place that has applied for a license since we made that change was AquaViva. And so AquaViva has machines in their location, but they don't have a conditional use. So I guess, similar to as what we have done with the current U-Haul owner, we will be advising AquaViva that they should go through the conditional use process, so that they will have followed that. If that sounds like an okay process, and I apologize that that happened, certainly in the future, when we change things from an allowable use within a district, and we make it a conditional use, and there is a licensure process that goes along with that, we need to make sure that our documents reflect that that's something that is necessary before the license is granted. So Mary Papil was here yesterday to talk both about her great business in our downtown, occasions on the avenue. I practically get in a car accident looking at her new windows all the time, they're so awesome. But she was talking about the, the fundraiser event that she would like to do for the court-appointed special advocate service, CASA, and so met with her as what, as the representative of the retail businesses in the downtown. We met at the Main Street office, the, a member of the Chamber of Commerce was there, a member of the Batavia School District. So this is really taking off as something that, hopefully, the whole community is going to embrace. So we talked about some planning for that, that they would do some, some branding around the event for the City of Batavia to be a 2020 event, and culminating in really a big event happening in the month of April, which is Child Abuse Awareness Month. Mary also brought up that that is going to be the next mural, that is going to be at Water Street Studios, is going to benefit CASA. And so there is the event that is in downtown Geneva, that is Hands Around the Courthouse, and that happens on April 2nd, and April 2nd will also be the date of the unveiling of the new mural at Water Street Studios benefiting CASA. So look forward to the city participating in that event. And Mayor mentioned yesterday, I just wanted to bring up a little bit more information about the dementia-friendly city. Last week, St. Charles hosted an event at their library, there were about 25 individuals in attendance from St. Charles, Geneva, and Batavia, and Kane County, and then also a representative from Lake County, several cities up in Lake County have received the dementia-friendly city designation, and she was there from the Alliance on Aging, who has assisted many different communities in achieving their certification. And so we had a discussion about collaborating with the tri-cities, and having our area designated as a dementia-friendly area. And then today I had opportunity to have lunch with Amanda Gosnell from the Homestead, both to have a chance to talk to her after all of the Legionnaires incident that happened within our community, and to share with her what a great job that we think that they did as an organization, addressing that issue, and how great they were to work with and collaborate with, and that the communication between the city and Homestead and our county went very well. And so we wanted to celebrate that fact, but also bring Amanda into these discussions that we're having about the dementia-friendly city as well. So, other than that, I don't have anything, unless anybody has any questions for me.
You know, I, I just want to throw in here, because we've been talking about the budget tonight. You all know I've been here a long time, and I've never seen as many people, I will tell you, on the doorstep as there are now, looking for the city to come up with some money to start granting, or funding, or supporting all kinds of good causes. I'm not, I'm not gonna name any of them, but I would tell you, we got probably 20 that are out there, outside the door here, hoping that somehow or another, Batavia, Geneva, St. Charles, and others are gonna start writing grants, or support checks, or something. Now, we certainly don't put any, we haven't put any of that in the budget, and I think I, I would be very cautious about us doing the first one, just because it's gonna be then Katie bar the door, with everybody and their brother in here with their good cause, and, and there's nobody that's talked to me that probably can't make a pretty good cause from, you know, whether you want to take care of stray dogs, or you want to help people with dementia, or you want to help veterans get through with various issues that they have. I mean, there's a lot of great causes out there. Our friends at the VFW have been down here looking for the city to grant them, or give them some type of a, some kind of financial support, and that's all, you're gonna all have to probably make some decisions here on some of this stuff, but there's a, there's a huge number, and a lot of it, I would tell you, is all predicated on the fact that they can't, they used to be able to go to the state of Illinois, and they would, you know, state representatives and senators could get them some kind of a grant, or something, and that's all kind of disappeared. And that's all kind of disappeared. And so now it's reverted, and this is not unique to Batavia. Every mayor I talked to has got this same thing going on with all these folks wanting to come in. And so it's, it's kind of a tenuous ground you're standing on here because there is a lot of them out there right now that are looking to places like the city governments or the village boards to give them money.
Your honor, you had mentioned a few, a few meetings back. Um, I had walked away from that thinking that you thought that there were some very good community organizations that are, that are in danger of not existing any longer.
Well, there might be, but I mean, I, I guess that's all part of the conversation that we may have to have, but, you know, some of them I have to say, well, you know, why did you do this or why did you do that? And, you know, some of them have picked up the reins of the fallen, whatever the group was, and it's kind of crashed and burned already and they're trying to re, put it back up on its feet. I don't know what to tell you. Uh, it's, it's, it's very problematic. I think we could end up spending a lot of time down here if we get into this, talking about who should get support and who shouldn't. But there is, there is a big group of folks out there right now that are down here knocking on the door and we come in and talk to you. And Laura and I have had several in and other members of the city have had people in. Uh, and I don't know where we're going with it. I just want to put you all on alert that that's out there.
Sure. I, and I'm, I'm not saying write checks to organizations, but as a city, if we have resources that we can point them in the right direction or promote, or like you do at meetings and invite them to come in here and talk about their need.
I mean, you know, classics are the, is the closed closet and the, um, you know, the food pantry and the access toy drive. I mean, those are all kind of almost city, well, we, we are involved with all three of those to, whether we're letting them use our property or we're, you know, we're giving them technical support on distribution days with the police or whatever have you. So we do some of that, but I mean, it could get a lot wider and deeper if we just said, okay, come on in and help us out. Cause there's a whole bunch of them that haven't, they've talked to me at least, but they haven't stepped in here and said, gee, can you give me a grant? But there's a lot of grant people. That's, I was to a meeting a while back, I may have told you this, and one of the mayors in the southwest suburbs says, I wish I could go someplace and have the word grant removed from the dictionary or the vocabulary. Says every place I, meeting I go to, there's some citizens group there saying, well, just go to the state or federal government and get a grant. And he says, man, 30 years ago, you maybe could have done some of that, but that's, that's kind of gone now.
Sure. Some of our neighboring communities do have very large community organizations that have benefactors and they dole out checks every year. Those are separate organizations. Those are not run by the municipalities though.
Not the city.
So we could certainly encourage civic and community involvement as opposed to us writing checks then.
I mean, you got the historical society that's trying to do something with the museum. You got the Flag Day Committee right outside the door here. I mean, there's a lot of great causes out there. I'm not trying to downplay or poo poo any of them, but there's just, you know, we spent the whole first part of the meeting talking about our, our conservative views on how we're gonna manage our money. I think we're doing a great job with it, but there's this whole other thing that's kind of laying there wanting to spring itself on us and say, gee, can't you give me 10,000 or whatever the issue may be.
Having, having just come from the meeting prior to the discussion on that, we're looking for grants too on that sort of stuff, but I can't imagine we would ever look to the city to have that given to us because that just doesn't seem like a priority in that, that sense. But I think like you had mentioned that we, we highlight the different communities that are out there, the Dunham Fund and, uh, one of the other funds, we did get that. That's why we have half a million dollars for, for the monument. Still have a half million to go. Um, but at least we've gotten the ones that are out there. I think it's also an opportunity as we're seeing, um, Community Dinner started out very small. It's been now three, four years and look how much exponentially that has grown for, and that was not even planned. The first year was just to make sure it covered the cost. The extra went in and now we had over 20,000 donated. So that has been phenomenal. And then I think as we're seeing, um, I think we all probably got it, but there's local businesses that are doing things on their own, uh, to give back to the community. And that in this day and age where people aren't necessarily coming to the city looking for money, but are taking the initiatives themselves as business owners to give back and be a part of the community, that without a doubt needs to be highlighted and recognized because that's phenomenal.
Sure.
Okay. Any others?
Yes, I have another. Um, talking about a meeting next week. Traditionally, the city council does not meet, um, the Tuesday prior to Thanksgiving. Um, however, there are two business items. Um, I think that they are of, uh, a relative, you know, minor nature, that maybe they could be brought to city council if no one objects. One of those is we've discussed, um, the community survey. And I did a presentation on that and I seemed to get pretty unanimous approval that it would be a good thing to utilize the services of the National Research Center so that we could have that standardized, um, survey that is used by hundreds of communities across the country in order to benchmark ourselves with others. And so I'd like to bring that direct to, uh, city council on December 2nd because it allows us the month of December to do a lot of preparatory work so that we can get that survey out first thing next year. The other is another fair, fairly minor item, but it is the replacement of, um, these two projectors and screens and to install a monitor, um, to assist and aid the, the viewing audience back there, uh, better able to be able to see so that Wendy Bednerick sitting back there can better see what's going on on these, uh, screens sitting up here. The change was prompted by BATV, um, upgrading their equipment. And so the, uh, unfortunately, uh, their state of the art equipment no longer communicates with the 12-year-old projectors that we have in this room. And so if it's all right, I'd like, uh, Howard to be able to bring that, um, proposal to you. He did an RFP, he can go through the numbers with you. It'll be about a $35,000 expense, but again, we can get that work done this year as long as we can get it approved at the first city council, um, budget of the year.
The, um, the survey too, you had funds out of the existing budget that was already still there.
Absolutely. It's just, both of these are unbudgeted items that need to be brought to, um, city council. There's sufficient room in the 2019 budget in order to accomplish both of those projects.
Is, is there room for some of the à la carte features of that survey?
Yes.
I, I put down, I really would like the Spanish component added to that. It didn't seem like a lot of money to make sure we're covering that population.
It isn't. Um, the other things that we can do are, um, a comparison of ourselves to similar situated other communities. We absolutely want to do that. It also allowed us the opportunity to take a look at a com, uh, comparison by geographic area within our own city to see how, um, the, the opinions vary, um, given the different geographic regions. The one area that we decided to back off on, which was a $3,500 expense, was, actually the question, even though the question was a $2,000 expense, I think that we should include an open-ended, um, question for people to answer. The one that I thought that we could back off on the expense and even they agreed is there's a $3,500 expense if you want an in-person presentation of the results. And I feel that, um, I talked to them and they said they do it remote all the time from their own desk in Denver. So I think that's a, an expense that we can forego. So I anticipate that, uh, the all-in expense is gonna be, um, I say up to 25,000, but I hope that we can do it for a couple thousand dollars less than that.
And we might have state of the art equipment so that they could present on there.
We may.
That's one question that I may actually email Howard about is would, would, would it be possible, depending on what kind of projectors we get, be able to hook that up the internet, have somebody Skype in on one of those so that they could be sitting on the screen for meetings?
I think the answer to that question is yes, with our upgrade to Office 365.
Cause I think that's something that we've talked about for a long time. We did it once, uh, something we should think, we did Skype once with a laptop sitting there.
That's right.
Yeah. So I, I, I think, you know, in, in Skype Carol's honor, we should think about doing that.
Right. Oh, wow. Did you Skype from Mexico or that? No, no.
My, my only concern is whether their audio would be picked up on the recording, but it's a question for Howard.
Right. And I think that's something technically, if that's possible, that's something that we should consider when we're doing it.
Absolutely.
Make sure that if that's something available, we should have it available.
All right. Well, it sounds like people are okay with me bringing those two to city council, so we'll plan on those on the second.
Moving right through without having to have a meeting next Tuesday.
That's correct.
So.
I move we adjourn.
Second. Right. All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay.